It is now 6:30. I am calling the meeting of the St. Louis County Council to order Tuesday, February 23rd, 2020. It is now 6:30. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Days?
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Present.
Councilmember Fitch?
Here.
Councilmember Webb?
Here.
Councilmember Clancy?
Here.
Councilmember Tracus?
Present.
Councilmember Harder?
Present.
Madam Chair, we have a call.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Nancy?
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman Days. As you know, I continue to object to your assertion that you are the chair of this body, as does our own legal counsel. We have a judge considering the matter as we speak. If you wish to preside over tonight's meeting, go ahead so that we can continue county business with as little interruption as possible, but I do need to continue to assert my objections until there's a court ruling. Thank you.
Councilwoman Tracus?
Thank you. I concur and join in Councilwoman Clancy's objection. I note, for the record and for the public, that the court has now been fully briefed in the circumstances, and it is my hope that perhaps as early as next Tuesday, we will have a ruling and the matter will be resolved. Thank you.
Approval of the journal. Is there a motion to approve the journal of the meeting of February 9th, 2021?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Motion carries. The February 9th, 2021 journal is approved. The journal from February 16th, 2021 has not yet been finalized. Moving on to a special presentation, I think Councilwoman Webb.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to suspend the rules for the purpose of adopting and presenting a resolution to the Honorable William Lacy Clay.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Motion carries. The rules are suspended.
Yes, would you please read the resolution, Clerk?
Yes, ma'am. Resolution number one, introduced by councilmembers Webb and Days. Whereas, William Lacy Clay Jr., a native St. Louisan, was elected to the Missouri House of Representatives in 1983, and then the Missouri Senate in 1991. In over 17 years, he established a distinguished record serving the people of Missouri and the General Assembly. And whereas, during his time as a state legislator, Mr. Clay authored legislation to establish the Missouri Historic Tax Credit, and also sponsored him pass the landmark Missouri Hate Crimes Law, a groundbreaking Civil Rights Act which not only protected African Americans, Hispanics, and disabled Missourians, but also provided equal protection from hate crimes for the LGBTQ community. And whereas, in 2000, Mr. Clay was elected to the United States House of Representatives to represent Missouri's first congressional district, serving 10 terms in the U.S. House of Representatives, many as Missouri senior Democrat in Washington and the St. Louis region's senior member of Congress. And whereas, Congressman Clay, who chaired the powerful House Financial Services Subcommittee on Housing, Community Development, and Insurance, was a fierce advocate for jobs, education, healthcare, fair housing, environmental justice, and defending the right to vote. And whereas, Congressman Clay also helped write, pass, and defend provisions of the landmark Affordable Care Act, which doubled the federal investment for community-based healthcare. And whereas, Congressman Clay, proud father of Carol and Will Clay, loving husband to Patricia, and parishioner of St. Nicholas Catholic Church, is a man to go to the family and faith. And whereas, when a man has been so devoted to public service, community, and country, it is appropriate for the council and all St. Louis countyans to pause and take note. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section 1, the County Council congratulates the Honorable William Lacy Clay Jr. on the occasion of his retirement from a long and accomplished career as a legislator, and expresses its deepest appreciation for his service to the people of Missouri. Section 2, the administrative director shall send a certified copy of this resolution to Congressman William Lacy Clay Jr. as a permanent token of the council's admiration and gratitude.
Councilwoman Webb, you're recognized.
Yes, Madam Chair. I move for the adoption of resolution number 1.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call please.
Can we have some discussion first?
Well, absolutely. Councilman Fitch, you are recognized.
Thank you, ma'am. Congressman Clay, all I get to do is vote. When we vote for this, I wanted to say it now. So thank you for your many years of-- I know you and I worked on many projects together. You were always very supportive of law enforcement. I will never forget that. And one of the things I learned from you was, we don't have to agree on everything to agree on some things. So, so thank you for your service, and it's an honor to be able to recognize you this evening. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Clancy, I'm sorry. Dunaway?
Yes. I too just want to thank you, Councilman Clay, for your many years of public service, and for always taking my calls and being so supportive of me getting into public service. So thank you so much for everything that you have done for our region, and I hope this means that you're going to get to take some well-deserved time to spend with your family and have some fun.
Thank you. Councilman, Congressman Clay, we have worked together on many issues. Me serving in the House, and you serving in the House, and the Senate, and both of us doing that. It was a pleasure to work with you on some things. We recognize that we did not agree with everything and with each other, and what we did that with grace and with a sense of professionalism that we were able to accomplish that. And I think that set a good tone for how legislative bodies should act. And so I do appreciate your tutelage over the many, many years, and I wish you the best, you and your family, as you move forward, and I'm sure into some other careers. So thank you so much.
Councilwoman Days?
Yes. Councilwoman Tracus, you're recognized.
Thank you. Councilman Clay, I just want to say that you represented the first district with distinction, honor, and incredible effectiveness. Your professionalism and that effectiveness will be sorely, sorely missed. But somehow, I have the sense the good Lord is not through with you yet. He's going to use you and your skills in big ways. But again, thank you, along with everyone else, for your service and for your distinction, distinctive, and distinguished representation of district. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yes, Councilwoman Days.
Councilwoman Clancy, you're recognized.
Yes. Congressman, I wanted to also add to the chorus of warm wishes to you as you embark on this next chapter of your journey. I don't know that we got to work together on anything, but I appreciated how much I saw you show up in the community at different events to engage with constituents, a good reminder to us all what this job is really about. And I also followed closely your work on affordable housing issues. And I, again, wish you the best in your retirement, and congratulations.
Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, before we vote, I would like to--
You are recognized.
Thank you. So I do want to take this opportunity because I feel like this is well-deserved, for I am new in this public service role and lane, but I take a lot of lessons learned and guidance from the Honorable William Lacy Clay. I have a prepared statement, so I don't get off course and I don't get mushy, so I want to stick to it. But let me read this and share this with you, sir. I want to take this time to acknowledge all your years of service, that the Honorable Lacy Clay has sacrificed, and it was a true sacrifice, and given to the first congressional district. Congressman Clay led the federal effort to locate the new Western headquarters of the National Geospatial Intelligence Agency in North St. Louis, which at $1.7 billion is the largest single federal investment in St. Louis history. I pause there to say, it took big change and great leadership like that to change the region of St. Louis, and I only hope that we, as a legislative body in the St. Louis County Council, would look to your professionalism, and your big dreams, and your hard work to follow in those footsteps. I personally want to thank the congressman for his support and encouragement during my new tenure as a public servant. Serving the public is a commitment, not only from the person, but from their family and their friends. Thank you, sir, for being a testament of this true commitment to our community. Thank you, congressman, and enjoy the next chapter in your life because it's so well deserved, sir.
Any further discussion? It has been moved in second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye, and congratulations.
Madam Chair, on resolution number 1, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number 1 has been passed, adopted. We would, at this time, like to have some comments from Congressman Clay, if he'd like to do so.
Yes, thank you so much, Madam Chair. Let me also thank the entire St. Louis County Council, and in particular, your newest councilmember, Shalonda Webb. I am most appreciative of this honor. And as was mentioned by Councilman Fitch, I've worked with quite a few of you out here. Madam Chair, we go back to our days in the state legislature, and just in the past year, we have been, we've worked together to bring affordable housing to the city of Weston, which happens to be in your council district. And I think about Councilwoman Dunaway, who I've worked with during the PPP program, and she was so helpful in getting some of those vendors assistance out at the airport. And also, in her district, we were able to tackle in a bipartisan way Westlake landfill, which is now in the process of being cleaned up. And Councilman Fitch, as the police chief of St. Louis County, we have had a great working relationship, going back to my early days in Congress. And so I am most appreciative of this recognition. And as Councilwoman Dunaway said, I'm looking forward to retirement, playing a little golf, and then figuring out, and doing a little writing, and figuring out my next move. So, again, thank you to all of you, and don't let me forget the county executive Sam Page, who I go back with, with a 20, more than 20-year relationship, and I cherish your friendship also. So again, thank you all for this honorable recognition, and I will cherish it. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I want you to be careful about the word retirement. Sometimes, and people in public service don't get a chance to do that. Come a little quick and sit down when you get roped back in somehow. But thank you so, so very much for all that you have done, and we wish you, all of us wish you the best. Thank you, and thank you for joining us this evening.
For sure. Have a great meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a little bit openings this evening, so we will move to the communications.
Madam Chair, we have no tax compromises, zoning matters, or road and bridge matters this evening, so we will move to other communications. Under Other Communications, item number 1.
Receive file and the appropriation transfer be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Second.
Does Councilman Harder?
Yes.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Item number 2, 4th District.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number 3, 6th District.
Receive file, the deposit agreement and the subdivision plot be approved as requested.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
Name? Who was that?
Fitch.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you for that, Madam Chair. Item number 4, 1st District.
Receive file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 5, 3rd, 1st, and 4th Districts.
Receive file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Send motion through item number 7.
So ordered.
Item number 8, 5th District.
Receive file and refer to the county executive.
So ordered.
Item number 9.
Receive file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 10, 2nd District.
Receive file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Moving on to add-ons, Madam Chair. Item number 1, 5th District.
Receive file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 2, 6th District.
Receive file and refer to the county executive.
So ordered. We will have the report of the county executive.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. And I too have enjoyed the opportunity to work with Congressman Clay over the past 20 years, and congratulations on the next opportunity in life. It was a year ago this week that we were preparing to open our emergency operations center, paying for what we knew was inevitable, the worldwide pandemic arriving in St. Louis County. And it did, a few weeks later, with St. Louis County having the first confirmed case in the state. We moved swiftly to put into place safety measures and public health protocols that we know save lives. I don't think anyone a year ago thought vaccine would be going at arms today. The power of cooperation, science, and sheer will has allowed the process to begin sooner than anyone could have imagined. Just like testing supplies early on, vaccine supply has been much lower than demand, but more supply is becoming available, and we stand ready to increase our number of vaccine sites to ensure that every dose we get is used quickly. On Saturday, 2,375 shots were given at a large-scale vaccination event at the University of Missouri in St. Louis. Working with State Emergency Management Agency, the St. Louis County Department of Public Health recruited 150 volunteers, primarily as vaccine experts, to work alongside staff to ensure the event was a success. The event went smoothly, and I want to thank our employees with the Department of Public Health for putting together this event in partnership with the state. Including the vaccines on Saturday, we have now administered almost 21,000 shots. That includes 16,551 first doses and 4,300 second doses. Bad weather last week led to a delay of vaccine shipments to St. Louis County, and as a result, 3,000 doses we were to get last week arrived this week, along with the 3,000 scheduled to arrive this week. With 6,000 doses in hand, we quickly are able to offer appointments to those on a pre-registration list who are currently eligible based on the state guidelines. For those who have not yet done so, please pre-register at stlcorona.com. It's fine to register on numerous sites, but we ask that you only accept an appointment at one location. Holding more than one appointment prevents others from an opportunity to get the vaccine. We continue to work with other partners to make the vaccine as accessible as possible, and I'm hopeful that later this week, we can announce another partnership that will substantially increase accessibility across the county. Our new North County Outreach Group met last week, working to ensure that our historically underrepresented residents are informed about the vaccine and how to get access to it. The group includes about 20 community leaders who are committed to getting everyone in our community a vaccine who wants one. And as their work continues, I'll share more details at upcoming briefings. This is a promising moment for our country. The priorities and commitments are in place at the federal, state, and local levels to significantly increase vaccine supply and to get more assistance to our residents and businesses that have been hit hard by this pandemic. With the hope for better days ahead, we must never lose sight of the immense toll this pandemic has taken on our country. More than 500,000 Americans have lost their lives to this pandemic, including 1,932, right here in St. Louis County. As we get deeper into the year, and more people are vaccinated, we will be safer and be able to move them out more freely, and enjoy more of the things that we have had to sacrifice to protect us all. It's been a long 12 months, but the commitments that you have made to stay safe are paying off. Please continue those responsible actions. A return to normal is within reach. Thank you.
Thank you. We're moving on to public forum now. Madam Clerk, how many constituents do we have this evening?
We have six.
Six. Thank you very much for taking the time to participate in our process. When your name is announced, would you listen for the clerk to ask you, and then begin speaking? Would you give us your first name, last name, and your zip code, please, for the record? Madam Clerk, will you call the first public speaker?
Yes, Madam Chair. Our first speaker this evening is Michael Meredith, followed by Patty Cantor.
Okay, I am Michael Meredith, zip code 63141. Beginning this week, I'll be serving as a site ambassador for Creve Court Park as part of the Open Space Council's Community Service Alliance. In that role, I'll be recruiting volunteers and working with St. Louis County Parks on various habitat restoration and cleanup projects within the park. I want to express my wholehearted support for the prairie planting project proposed by the Missouri Prairie Foundation. Hundreds of years ago, before the time of European settlement, nearly 15 million acres, one-third of the present state of Missouri, were covered by tall grass prairies. Acre by acre, these prairies gave way to farming and development, until less than 70,000 acres of these prairies remain in our state. As you well know, the land to be restored by the Prairie Foundation was prematurely bulldozed by the previous county administration as part of the ill-fated effort to build an ice rink complex. We now have a unique opportunity to restore this relatively small piece of land to the type of landscape not seen in this region for well over a century. A prairie restoration will increase ecological diversity and create habitat for native animals and insects. Prairies absorb a great deal of rain, reducing erosion and runoff. They also sequester carbon dioxide and provide a home for beneficial pollinators. Some people may propose other alternatives for this ground. However, a prairie restoration will have a lasting benefit that far exceeds any other form of construction or developmental use. Moreover, the cost to St. Louis County for this project is zero. I urge you to pass bill number 44, 2021, and give this land and environment that will benefit St. Louis County citizens for decades and possibly centuries to come. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Patty Cantor, followed by Suzanne Burley.
Hello? This is Patty Cantor, 63017. I just want to thank you all for all your hard work. Right now, I'd like to address the situation with trying to get teachers the vaccine before their proper tier, as determined by the Missouri government with the scientist involved. As a retired educator, I can't tell you that, I mean, obviously, I have lived this life, but I can't for the life of me figure out why we would want to be putting teachers ahead of other people, except with Lisa Clancy, with the Democratic Union supporting her. So to me, and a lot of the teachers, it just sounds like democratic pandering. My grandchildren have been in school since the third week of August. They attend a private and/or parochial school. There have not been any cases of COVID with the teachers. There have been a few students, and of course, those entire families stay home until the quarantine is over. But I just, I don't understand why all of a sudden, we're pandering to teachers. If Lisa felt that was that important, I wish she would have raised this in November, when decisions were being made. And then, as far as the vaccines given, I realized that St. Louis County has a Facebook page, and we put on that we had distributed 21,000 vaccines. But in fact, we're part of Region C, and BJC, I attended the meeting last Thursday, BJC has distributed 100,000, Mercy has distributed 100,000, SSM, 40 to 60, and St. Luke's, 14 to 16. That's all by memory. I'm pretty sure that's correct. According to the government's page, Region C has had 315,000 vaccines delivered, which I think is pretty good, and I think the county should be proud of this, rather than downplay how many vaccines have been given. Now, having said that, I've gone to Cape to get my shot, and I will be going back on Saturday, and I know people are driving out of St. Louis County to get their shots. Good for them, because it seems that some of the rural counties aren't as strenuous in trying to get their shots. So if we can go other places and relieve the pressure on St. Louis County, I think that's great. That leaves more for the people that cannot go. I know I'm running out of time, but thank you, and thank you to Lacy Clay, and God bless you all. Good night.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Suzanne Burley, followed by Mitch Leachman.
Hi, good evening. This is Suzanne Burley, 63123. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Great. Okay. First, I wanted to start this evening by saying thank you to Chairwoman Days for recognizing my comments last week at the meeting about the registration and needing a little bit more time. That was nice to be heard, and I'm hoping that that's still under consideration, and it's still being looked at as a possibility for us to get more time to register so we can have more people included in our comments. And then the second item I wanted to bring up was to kind of follow up from what Patty Cantor was saying about the vaccines, as I was on the meeting with Dr. Randall Williams as well, and heard the numbers. And before that meeting had taken place, I know that Lisa Clancy, from a previous meeting, was very angry and felt that St. Louis County was not receiving their fair share, and made, you know, made quite a few comments about it, made some posts about it, and invited him to come talk about the vaccinations. And once that was done, and everything was cleared up, and we did indeed find out that St. Louis County is getting a distribution that is fair, there were no further comments. It wasn't brought up that there was a mistake made. It was just left open-ended for us to stay angry, thinking that we were not getting our fair share. So I thought maybe something would be said. And then also to follow up with that, I noticed too, whenever we talk about the vaccines, that Lisa Clancy and Dr. Page keep on saying to go to the St. Louis County website to register, and there's never any mention of the Missouri Vaccine Navigator, which is a statewide way to register. And from my understanding is that registers you for several sites. So I was hoping that we could tell people about that as well, so that they know that there's more than just the St. Louis County-- there's more than just the St. Louis County website to register at. That's all my comments for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mitch Leachman, followed by Dawn Chapman.
My name is Mitch Leachman, and I live in Maryland Heights in 63043. I am the Director of Programs for the St. Louis Audubon Society, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of my Board of Directors and our 3,000 members. I urge the council to support Bill Number 44, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway, that would authorize the Director of Parks and Recreation to execute an agreement with the Missouri Prairie Foundation to install a prairie planting at Creve Court Lake Memorial Park. The proposed outdoor passive recreation project would make right a very big wrong from 2017, when the St. Louis Ice Center construction project was relocated from public to private property. In its wake, the developer left the 40-acre scar at the entrance to St. Louis County's largest, oldest, and most visited public park. Early in 2020, Tom Ott and the Parks and Recreation staff held an open forum to consider a wide variety of options for this space. The forum was in addition to an online survey, which gathered public input over several weeks. Both efforts yielded an overwhelming demand that the space become a natural area for passive recreation and education. Bill Number 44 would satisfy that public demand. The Missouri Prairie Foundation is a nationally-recognized nonprofit conservation organization that owns and manages 23 properties encompassing over 3,700 acres across the state. They have on-staff expertise in conserving, managing, and restoring prairie landscapes. Funding for the proposed prairie project at Creve Court Park will come from a grant they received from the Bridgeston Landfill Community Project Fund, a very fitting use for money from a legal settlement with operators of a landfill. The clearing of 40 acres of public parkland for the St. Louis Ice Center was wrong. In our view, it was illegal, and there should have been consequences. Yet, we could not be more thrilled with the proposed restoration of the space. St. Louis Audubon has always recognized and embraced the many varied uses of Creve Court Park. This project, located at one of the most visible entrances to the park, would seem a fitting support to that diversity of use. Positioned adjacent to a golf course and disc golf course, and across the street from Sailboat Cove and the Tremaine Shelter, the waving native grasses and wildflowers will also remind visitors of the critical importance of the park for biodiversity and nature. Again, we urge the council to vote yes on Bill Number 44 to authorize the prairie planting at Creve Court Park. The people asked for it, and it's the right thing to do. Thank you all for your time, attention, and service.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dawn Chapman, followed by Joan Smith-Lauer.
My name is Dawn Chapman. I live at 1160 Lord Avenue in Maryland Heights. I am co-founder of Just Moms STL. We are the organization that worked with not one but two Attorney Generals to get this landfill settlement. We worked with Attorney General Chris Koster when he filed suit in 2013 against the Bridgeston Landfill for polluting our community. We also worked with then Attorney General Josh Hawley, and under him, we fought very hard to secure a settlement that would put funds back in this community, because otherwise, they would have gone back into the state of Missouri's treasury, and this community, which had been harmed, would never have seen them. So we have been working hard with the Attorney General's Office and the St. Louis Community Foundation for years on the distribution of these grants. Now, we do not have any say on how this money is spent, but we do give our input, and I have to say, they have done a pretty good job listening to us and really including us in this. And I want to let you know that this grant was broken up into three tiers. It was broken up into mental health, a greening tier, which is this tier that we're talking about now, and an overall physical health. The reason we're talking about this grant right now is because it was allotted for use in a different area, and that fell through because they were going, the Missouri Prairie Foundation was going to coordinate with MoDOT, and MoDOT could not come up with accessibility for the public for the use of this. So this was the second choice, and it has to be used within the footprint of the landfill. So there is no other place to use this, and if this money is not used for this project, it goes back to Republic Services, and then they spend it on who knows what, and our community sees nothing. And that's what this looks like. Do I wish it could be spent on education and other things? Yeah, I do. I wasn't really thrilled with the fact that we had to have a greening grant. But we do, that is what other community stakeholders requested, and we acquiesced with that. And honestly, after looking over this, this is a really exciting opportunity, and I can't think of anything better to use the land in that park. The only thing that I'm sorry for is that maybe myself and my group didn't do a great job communicating with you all. Certainly tried to, but we're tiny, and we're exhausted, and we have a lot on our plates, and we thought that you guys were all aware of this, and we thought you were aware that it fell through with MoDOT. So I would say, the only thing I would say is, you know, what does upkeep of this area look like? That might be one thing that I would suggest the council look into, you know, in terms of mowing the area and whatnot. Will it cost additional money? But I know, again, we're in favor of this. And then if I could speak to one more thing, that little teacher thing that was talked about earlier.
That is three minutes. That is three minutes. Thank you. Our last speaker this evening is Joan Smith-Lauer.
Hi, my name is Joan Smith-Lauer. I live in unincorporated 63123. Want to remind the council we're out here, we're unincorporated, but we're here, and I want to speak specifically about two pieces of property. The first is the 21, our Tesson Ferry and Lindberg, and the other is Tesson Ferry and Grabloy. Both of these sites are zoned for drive-through restaurants. The site at 21, our Tesson Ferry and Lindberg, the building is still standing, the drive-through is there, there is a very nice outdoor eating space, which is the companies or the food services that are thriving now, is where you could eat outdoors. I object to just putting in an oil change place where we have so many around the area. It is zoned for food service, and we would like to have another food service and drive-through food service. And the same issue is that Grabloy and Tesson Ferry is zoned for a drive-through restaurant. We want it to remain that way. Food service industries are known to bring more employment to the area, especially more than oil change places. We also know that they're both on a bus line, on the Metrolink bus line, which leads to South County Mall, Mercy Hospital, where many people go to shop to get medical care, and this would only enhance that area where people can stop and get a meal before they get to their facility, before they go shopping. So to sum it up, this will bring more, more employment. It's easy to get to, it's on the bus line. They have been fast food restaurants before, and I would encourage the council to remain focusing on finding a fast food restaurant for these two sites. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, that was our last public speaker this evening.
Thank you so much, and thank all of you who decided to take the time out to join our meeting this evening. We will proceed now to introduction of bills.
Proceeding with introduction. Bill Number 62, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, An Ordnance Appropriating and Setting Apart the Amount of $4,198,244 from the Unappropriated Balances of Various Funds for Support of Projects Not Completed in 2020. Bill Number 63, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, An Ordnance Authorizing the County Executive to Accept a Grant of Up to $125,000 from the St. Louis Jefferson Solid Waste Management District, Appropriating the Same for Support of the St. Louis Household Hazardous Waste Program, and Authorizing the County Executive and the Director of the Department of Public Health to Execute Necessary Documents. Bill Number 64, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Clancy, An Ordnance Authorizing the County Executive to Execute a Contract with CDG Engineers Incorporated for Consulting Engineering Services Related to the Big Bend Boulevard Resurfacing Project AR-1794 and the Big Bend Road Resurfacing Project AR-1800, and Authorizing the Director of Transportation and Public Works to Execute Necessary Documents and Revisions to the Schedule of Work Activities. Bill Number 65, introduced by Councilmember Webb, An Ordnance Declaring the Public Necessity of and Providing for the Replacement of Bridge Number 105 in the Widening and Establishing of a Section of Public Road Designated as Hudson Drive, Lying Wholly Within Unincorporated St. Louis County, Missouri, Directing the Acquisition of Real Property Therefore, and Authorizing the County Executive and the Director of the Department of Transportation and Public Works to Execute Contracts, Agreements, and Related Documents. Bill Number 66, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway, An Ordnance Amending Title VI, Chapter 611, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974 as amended, the Animal Control Code by Enacting a New Section 611.270 pertaining to Establishment of a Barn Cat Program for Cats Within the Possession of the Department of Public Health, Division of Animal Care and Control. Madam Chair, that is all the bills.
Moving on to perfection, please.
Yes, ma'am. Bill Number 20.
Sorry. I apologize. Madam Chair, I received a message from Councilwoman Webb. She had a family emergency. She is not any longer on the meeting.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. I have returned. Thank you, Chris.
She's back. I'm sorry. My apologies.
Okay. Thank you.
Going back, Bill Number 20, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold Bill Number 20.
Bill Number 20 is held.
Bill Number 32, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to hold Bill Number 32.
Bill Number 32 is held.
Bill Number 266, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder.
I move to hold Bill 266.
Bill Number 266 is held.
Bill Number 267, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder.
I move to hold Bill 267.
Bill Number 267 is held.
Bill Number 53, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
I move to perfect Bill Number 53.
Is there a second?
Second. Harder.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill Number 53 is perfected.
Bill Number 54, introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
I move to perfect Bill Number 54.
Is there a second?
Second. Harder.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill Number 54 is perfected.
Bill Number 55, introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
I move to perfect Bill Number 55.
Is there a second?
Second. Harder.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill Number 55 is perfected.
Bill Number 56, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect Bill Number 56.
Is there a second?
Second. Harder.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill Number 56 is perfected.
Bill Number 57, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill Number 57.
Is there a second?
Second. Dunaway.
All in favor, please say ayes.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill Number 57 is perfected.
Bill Number 58, introduced by Councilmembers Dunaway, Webb, Clancy, Tracus, and Harder.
I move to perfect Bill Number 58.
Is there a second?
Second. Tracus.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Bill Number 58 is perfected.
Bill Number 59, introduced by-
I'm sorry.
Bill Number 59, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill Number 59. Is there a second?
Second. Harder.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill Number 59 is perfected.
Bill Number 60, introduced by Councilmembers Webb, Days, and Fitch.
I move to perfect Bill Number 60.
Is there a second?
Second. Fitch.
Discussion.
All in favor, discussion? Councilwoman Tracus, you're recognized.
Thank you. I commend Councilwoman Webb for this legislation. At the end of the day, this and Bill Number 61 are designed to address cronyism and political paybacks. As you may remember, in the last two and a half weeks or so, Councilwoman Clancy, myself, and Councilwoman Webb all requested legislation to address this issue, and we had varying degrees of expanse. It's my personal belief that in order to really effectively address cronyism, we need to cast as wide a web as possible. My original request was for five years and reached well into federal office holders. After discussing things with Councilwoman Webb and Councilwoman Clancy, I felt that two years, or was convinced anyway, that two years was reasonable, and that we should at least have that net no smaller than the ability to include state senators, state representatives, and council members. They have to wait two years after leaving office before they could be hired by the county. This bill does not go that far. It only pertains to former council members. So for that reason, I don't believe it goes far enough, and I will be voting no. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clancy, you're recognized.
Yes, I am pleased that there appears to be a consensus on the council about fixing this issue. Like Councilwoman Tracus, I also think that this bill doesn't go far enough. I think that we need to be proactive. You know, we've solved one problem in the county, but we might create another and another avenue if we don't extend this to state-level offices. So that is why I am in favor of a more restrictive version, which is going to be, which is Bill 61. So I will be voting against this. Also, appreciate the spirit of this here, but again, think it doesn't go far enough.
Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Fitch.
Thank you. And I would just add that I believe that it's sufficient. It's just interesting to hear some comments from members of the council that suddenly are interested in cronyism after they supported Rochelle Walton Gray receiving the position that she did from the county executive. It's like closing the barn door after the horse is out, but that's okay. It's better than nothing, so I will be supporting Bill Number 60. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Webb, you're recognized.
Yes, ma'am. I want to first say I appreciate all of the council members who do see a time for us to get more effective legislation and making sure that we are focused on serving the people and not ourselves. I understand and I respect Councilwoman Clancy, excuse me, and Councilwoman Tracus for their interest and want to expand this to go further. As Councilwoman Fitch noted, I've only been here one month, and my peers have been here much longer, so they've seen this in action. And if they want to cast their nets wider, let them do so. But for now, I want to put the onus on the council member. We talk about serving the people and doing the business of the people, but we have to have that accountability with ourselves first. So let's start here with us, and if we have an opportunity to expand, let's go for that expansion later. But now I want to focus on the ownership in the council members themselves. And so I just feel that we need to have model government, and one step in the right direction is a step. And I hope we continue to work together to make better improvements, but I would like to start here. So again, I want us to make sure that we're working to work for the priorities of the people and not working for ourselves. So again, all- So again, all councilmembers, I appreciate your support and thinking of this, but I will be voting yes on this legis- legislation to start here. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, any further comments, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of Bill number sixty, vote aye.
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 Those opposed, no.
No.
Chairs in doubt, roll call, Madam, uh, Clerk, please.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
You on me?
I can't get it right tonight, uh, no.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
No.
Councilmember Tracus.
No.
Councilmember Tr- uh, Harder, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number sixty for perfection, there are four ayes and three noes.
Bill number sixty has been perfected.
Moving on to Bill number sixty-one introduced by councilmembers Tracus, Clancy, and Dunaway.
To our Councilwoman Webb's point, Bill sixty-one is the very extension that she referred to. It encapsers, encapsulates bu- state state senators, state representatives, and councilmembers. This is the bill that we should pass, I move to perfect Bill number sixty-one.
Is there a second?
Second. Second, Dunaway.
Discussion?
Yes.
Councilwoman F- Clancy, you're recognized.
Yeah, um, the councilwoman from the fourth mentioned that, you know, Bill sixty is a good starting point, but I don't know that we need to wait till later when we have the next step right in front of us, I think the time is now to make this bill as strong as it can be, so, you know, if this bill gets voted down, I I wonder if there's an opportunity based on what Councilwoman Webb said for a substitute bill on Bill sixty that would add these.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, no?
No.
No.
Chairs in doubt, please call the roll.
Councilmember Days.
No.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
No.
Councilmember Webb.
No.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Ayes.
Councilmember Harder.
No.
Madam Chair, on Bill number sixty-one, there are three ayes and four noes.
Bill number sixty-one fails on perfection. Moving on to final passage.
Bill number three twenty introduced by councilmember Clancy.
Please hold on the order of business.
Bill number three twenty is held.
Bill number fourteen introduced by councilmembers Tracus, Days, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Clancy, and Harder.
Move to hold Bill number fourteen.
Bill number fourteen is held.
Well, substitute Bill number one for Bill number seventy-six introduced by councilmembers Dunaway and Harder.
I move to hold substitute Bill number one for Bill number seventy-six.
Substitute Bill number one for Bill number seventy-six is held.
Substitute Bill number one for Bill number two oh two introduced by councilmember Clancy.
Yes, um, we need to have a hearing on this bill, I hope that that happens in the next several weeks, lots of stakeholders to get lined up for that hearing to weigh in on this, um, so with that, I will hold substitute Bill number one for Bill number two oh two.
Bill number sub- Bill, substitute Bill number one for Bill number two zero two is held and, uh, Councilwoman Clancy, please let my office know when you are available for a committee of the whole.
Bill number two twenty introduced by councilmember Tracus.
Move to hold Bill number two twenty.
Bill number two twenty is held.
Substitute Bill number one for Bill number three oh two introduced by councilmembers Dunaway and Webb.
I move for final passage of substit- of substitute Bill number one for Bill number three oh two.
Is there a second?
Second, Webb.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Ayes.
Councilmember Harder.
Ayes.
Madam Chair, on Bill, substitute Bill number one for Bill number three oh two, there are seven ayes.
Substitute Bill number one for Bill number three zero two is finally passed.
Bill number thirty-eight introduced by councilmembers Harder and Dunaway.
I move to pass fi- sorry, I move for final passage of Bill number thirty-eight.
Is there a second?
Second, Dunaway.
Discussion.
Discussion. Councilwoman Tracus, you're recognized.
Thank you, um, there's absolutely no reason that this bill needs to be moved to final passage tonight, in fact, there's a myriad of reasons why it shouldn't be. Number one, we only received less than a week ago copies of the risk assessment and pro forma financial statements from the City of Hazelwood and the developer respectively. This body has an obligation of due diligence to inquire into those documents and there's no rush here, they don't even have their financing in place. Moreover, we've only got partial information from the county's budget director, it's likely that there won't be sufficient hotel tax money for this six million dollars and at the end of the day, as I said, they have no financing in place now, there's no reason to move forward, we should hold another hearing so that we can inquire into the documents that they produce concerning their, um, professed financial condition, so for those reasons, I believe that the motion should be withdrawn, matter held, and another hearing scheduled, thank you.
Any further discussion, Councilman, Councilwoman Dunaway?
Thank you, Councilwoman Days, um, so thank you, Councilman Tracus, for, um, your stewardship over the county's tax revenue, especially during these challenging times and when the hotel taxes are, um, pretty slim. Um, the reason I feel confident about this is that this ordinance puts up, puts us last in line, so every other financial commitment has to come in before ours does go in, so we would be last in, which makes this a relatively less risky venture for us, um, and I think that by showing that St. Louis County is supportive of this project, it will help other financiers come to the table and be willing, willing to invest in a much needed area for investment, so I am delighted to see this, uh, move forward.
Any further discussion? Seeing none-
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry?
Yes ma'am. Yes ma'am, I just want to add to the discussion, um, as I've learned more about Powerplex and been in North County and I have seen firsthand what happens when we drag our feet and we want to continue to learn more and more and more and then we get the situation what we, some use as a for later word, James Town Mall, I don't want to see that happen nowhere in St. Louis County and especially not again impactful to North County. We, as Councilwoman Kelly Dunaway just shared, we need to show that good faith that we believe, believe in our community and put our money where our mouth is, however, this isn't a risk for us, it's safeguards in here, where we can make sure that the money set aside for tourism is not touched until all financing is actually secured by the, uh, Powerplex in their, in their leadership, so to me, this is a way to surely increase and improve North County and St. Louis Co- St. Louis County as a whole, um, I I I'm just very passionate about being proactive and making sure that we have good community development in St. Louis County, specifically in North County, and so with that being shared, I will be supporting this bill going forward, thank you, Madam Chair.
You're quite welcome, any further discussion?
Yes, please.
Councilwoman Clancy, you're recognized.
I appreciate the c- the discussion on this, this bill, um, I appreciated the hearing last week and I also appreciated, I know that there was a push from some councilmembers to go ahead and vote on this last week, but I do appreciate, um, Councilman Harder's willingness to hold this bill till this week because it did give my office some time to do some additional homework, um, I appreciate what Councilwoman Dunaway shared, I don't necessarily need to echo that, and also what Councilwoman Webb shared, um, my office did, um, have communication with our, with our county budget director, um, who said that, that in his opinion, um, based on the numbers he crunched, this was a relatively low risk project for the county to take on and I see a lot of the potential here in this kind of proactive community development, um, that is going to be, um, an important thing for the economy in North County and for the region as a whole and an important development for families, um, which is something important to me, obviously, is having, having a little one, so, um, you know, the one thing that I did kind of push on last week, um, to the developers and the project proponents that I still would like to see more of even after passing this, is to make sure that there are some really strong e- um, commitments to equity in this project, um, we did hear some a little bit about that, but again, I look forward to seeing documented commitments to make sure that this is a facility that is, that is accessible to people across, um, across income levels in St. Louis County so that we really can make sure that all of our young people and their families have access to the incredible amenities that this project will provide, so I will be voting in support tonight.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
No.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number thirty-eight, there are six ayes and one no.
Bill number thirty-eight is finally passed.
Bill number forty-two introduced by councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of Bill number forty-two.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number forty-two, there are seven ayes.
Bill number forty-two is finally passed.
Bill number forty-three introduced by councilmember Clancy.
I move to, I move for final passage of Bill number forty-three.
Is there a second?
Second, Dunaway.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number forty-three, there are seven ayes.
Bill number forty-three is finally passed.
Bill number forty-four introduced by councilmember Dunaway.
So before I, uh, make a motion, I have something to say, if that's all right.
Councilwoman Dunaway, you have the floor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Days, um, Creve Court Park, uh, was established just after World War Two with four hundred and fifty acres of land. Today, Creve Court Park's two thousand one hundred and forty-five acres, which is double the size of Forest Park, is the crown jewel of St. Louis County Parks, hosting over two million visitors each year. A few years ago, then-county executive Steve Stinger decided to build an enclosed ice rink on a piece of Creve Court Park land designated as F six, which means that federal law does not allow enclosed structures without the approval of a conversion application. Steve Stinger and then-parks director Gary Bess did not file such an application before raising the land on which they intended to build the ice rink. When the Missouri Department of Natural Resources caught wind that something was happening without their approval, they were able to step in and the project stopped. Since that land was raised, there have been erosion and other issues related to the absence of vegetation replacing what had been there. St. Louis County has had to mow and care for those forty acres of land ever since. In efforts to find a way to get this land vegetated, St. Louis County held a public meeting in February of twenty twenty at the Maryland Heights Community Center. Fifty to sixty members of the community, representatives from a number of environmental groups, and the Missouri Department of Natural Resources was in attendance to decide collectively what should we, what sh- we should do with this land. At that meeting, this group of community stakeholders decided that we would pursue an outdoor recreation area with native plants and foot trails. In comes the Missouri Prairie Foundation, a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization committed to the development of habitats of native plants, butterflies, migrating monarchs, songbirds, and other wildlife native to Missouri. This organization was awarded a grant of more than three hundred and thirty thousand dollars by the Bridgeton Landfill Grant Program and as one of its key priorities, has volunteered to create such a habitat in the Creve Court Park lands raised by Stinger's Ice Rink Project. This is intended to be a place where St. Louis Countians and our visitors can enjoy what our native nature has to offer when we visit Creve Court Park. This prairie will be a place of beauty for anyone traveling along Marine Avenue and the Great River Screenway paths, as well as those visiting this jewel of St. Louis County Parks. This project does not require any kind of application because it's honoring the spirit of the F six designation and the Missouri Department of Natural Resources has already said as much. The Missouri Department of Natural Resources has offered to provide a written letter that they approve of this project, though unnecessary under federal law because this project fits within the Department of Interior's mandate to stay an outdoor recreation area into perpetuity. Once established in the next few years, this prairie habitat will be maintained by St. Louis County, but instead of having to mow and maintain the whole forty acres, we will be mowing and caring for foot trails while the prairie does what prairies naturally do all year round. This project has been a source of pride and excitement for St. Louis County, the Audubon Society, Open Space Council, environmental groups throughout the region, and the councilwoman who represents the district, me. This is a good, sound project with financial, recreational, and environmental upsides, one that will offer a boost of what's already beautiful and native to Missouri while also hosting a place where our butterflies, birds, and wildlife can live freely and thrive. It has still not been made clear to me why this is a controversy or why a committee of the whole has been requested. As such, it's impossible for me to even know who to invite, how they should prepare, and what information whichever of you is opposed to moving this forward would like to have. And despite the fact that we need to move forward so the Missouri Prairie Foundation can get to planting at the appropriate time this spring, if someone can please explain to me why we need a committee of the whole, I will hold this for another week. If not, I would much rather move for final passage this evening.
Well, may I say this, uh, uh, Councilwoman Dunaway, the information that you have shared would have been an opportunity for some, uh, at least for me, let me speak for me, to get that information and to ask questions, uh, about this particular, um, project that that you're reporting, I I don't want you to miss- I, I don't want you to misunderstand the fact that I am not supportive of this. While I may be, I do not know that, because the requisite information has not been given to me. And so I believe it is incumbent on each member of this council to get the information that they need to move forward. We had just this, just a situation before, uh, with the paralegal situation, we were able to come together, have a meeting, discuss this out, so that everyone would be able to hear the pros and cons of, of that particular project. And I don't see anything wrong with having a committee of the whole to discuss this and figure out, is this indeed the best? It may very well be, but that, that I, I will not have the, the questions that I need answered, and I look to the committee of the whole to do that.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Fitch.
Thank you, ma'am. I wanted to, uh, also, uh, support your request for committee of the whole on this. Uh, one of the things that I did do in my research on this, and by the way, I'm absolutely in support of restoring this property to its natural, uh, place of beauty, have no problem with that at all. However, um, then-councilman Page sponsored the original ordinance, and I'm reading from a St. Louis Public Radio story, Page sponsored the original ordinance approving the project, but said the council should call a timeout on the development after members of the public spoke out. And then a quote from Councilman Page at the time, "Like everyone on the council, we voted for a few things, we didn't explore as deeply as we should have," Page said, "and we should have had a public hearing on this before we ever voted on it." So, do we want to make that same mistake again and not have a public hearing about this before we vote on it? So that's my position. I think Dawn Chapman made a good point. As far as left unanswered is really what's the upkeep of the property going to be? So I don't want to regret, as then-councilman Page said, uh, the opportunity to have a public hearing. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I, and I, and I'm happy to hold this bill tonight and move this to a committee of the whole, but again, I really need to understand what information it is you want and who you want to have there, because this has still yet not been made clear to me.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Fitch.
I would like to have, uh, the parks director, Tom Ott, there to answer some questions about upkeep, uh, if, you know, there's a lot of questions we need to ask him, so that would be one I'd request.
Well, that's an easy button one, thank you. Councilwoman Days, if there's anything particular that your office would like to learn, please let me know, so that we can ensure that we get the right people there to make sure that your questions are answered, so we can move forward with this while it's still a good time to get their ducks in a row, to get things planted.
I will do that, and would you let my office know when is a good time for you to have a, 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 a meeting? We can schedule that, absolutely.
I already have, thank you, so.
So I just appreciate that.
With that, I move to hold Bill Number Forty-Four.
Thank you. Bill Number Forty-Four is held.
Thank you. Oops, thank you, Madam Chair. Bill Number Forty-Five, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move for final passage of Bill Number Forty-Five.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway. Councilmember Fitch. Councilmember Webb. Councilmember Clancy. Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number Forty-Five, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number Forty-Five is finally passed.
Bill Number Forty-Six, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill Number Forty-Six.
Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Days. Councilmember Dunaway. Councilmember Fitch. Councilmember Webb. Councilmember Clancy. Councilmember Tracus. Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number Forty-Six, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number Forty-Six is finally passed.
Bill Number Forty-Seven, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill Number Forty-Seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Harder? Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway. Councilmember Fitch. Councilmember Webb. Councilmember Clancy. Councilmember Tracus. Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number Forty-Seven, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number Forty-Seven is finally passed.
Bill Number Forty-Eight, introduced by Councilmembers Days and Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill Number Forty-Eight, is there a second?
Second, Clancy.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days. Councilmember Dunaway. Councilmember Fitch. Councilmember Webb. Councilmember Clancy. Councilmember Tracus. Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on Bill Number Forty-Eight, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number Forty-Eight is finally passed.
Bill Number Forty-Nine, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Yes, um, this bill pertains to responding to the invoice that has been issued by the state auditor's office, um, for the audit that was completed last year of, of many functions of county government and the Economic Development Partnership. Um, Councilman Harder has raised some concerns about this, and we have been in communication, and we did learn today that there was a mistake, a small mistake, but still a mistake in the invoice that was sent to us, so, um, we will probably have, um, a different form of this bill to introduce, and also, um, some continued discussion on this. So with that, I will hold it.
Bill Number Forty-Nine is held.
Bill Number Fifty, introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
I move for final passage of Bill Number Fifty.
Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days. Councilmember Dunaway. Councilmember Fitch. Councilmember Webb. Councilmember Clancy.
Um, we didn't have an opportunity to have a discussion, but I, my vote is no. Um, this bill pertains to cutting the funding for our lobbyists in Jefferson City. Um, I understand that Councilman Fitch is upset about some of the things that the lobbyists are working on on behalf of the county, particularly, um, related to public health and making sure that we, um, have local control over that, I think is important, but there's, there's many things that the lobbyists are working on on behalf of county residents, and so I think that this, this bill is, uh, pretty short-sighted, so I'm a no.
Councilmember Tracus. Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on Bill Number Fifty, there are four ayes and three noes.
Bill Number Fifty is finally passed.
Bill Number Fifty-One, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Um, this bill pertains to implementing the merit pay program that was approved as part of the budget process just this last year. Um, we have thousands of county employees who are due for a merit increase, but I do understand that Councilman Harder has raised some concerns, and we may be working on having a hearing next week. Um, this is very important, and like the last issue, um, I think that we need to not drag our feet on this again, because we have thousands of county employees that are counting on us for their pay increase. So let's do what we need to do to get our questions answered, whether that's a hearing or not, and let's work quickly on this. So with that, I will hold it this week.
And I believe, Councilwoman Clancy, that a COW has been, uh, scheduled?
Um, I have not been informed of a time. I did offer some availability to your office, but if it has been scheduled, that is news to me.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilman, uh, Harder.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate, uh, my, um, concern with this bill, and I'm glad we are able to schedule a committee of the whole. My concern is over projections of revenue. Yes, our people need a, uh, a raise, uh, but we also have to be in relationship to our substantial decrease in revenue and where we are right now with our budget. So if we do have a committee of the whole, I would encourage our budget director to be there with projections on what the rest of the year looks like, say, from, uh, June forward, uh, to make sure that we are making the right move at the right time and not putting us further in the hole than where we are right now. So that's my concern, and hopefully that can be resolved at the committee of the whole meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, and, uh, Clancy, I have just, uh, been informed that, uh, my office has sent the information around date, time, and place for everyone, so you might want to check with your assistants on that.
Yes, Councilwoman Days, can you please tell the public when that is, so they know if they want to tune in?
Oh, I have to look at my calendar. It is, it's one of the dates that you suggested, I believe it was in March, one of the dates that you suggested, but I can have my, uh, my assistant get that, I can't look at that right now.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Webb, thank you, thank you. Councilwoman Webb.
Madam Chair, thank you. Uh, I want to just echo some of the concerns, um, about the merit increase. I want to make sure, because I've heard, as I'm new in this tenure, from multiple departments, and the first thing I hear is that they cannot sustain their staffing, that they're inadequate staffing for all multiple departments, from transportation to public works, you name it. There isn't, um, the amount of work has increased, but the amount of staff to support their work has decreased, and then those who are remaining loyal to the St. Louis County and serving, uh, we haven't taken care of them. I understand budgets, I understand we need to balance and make sure that we can sustain the rest of this fiscal year. At the same time, we need to take care of our people, so I'm looking forward to the committee of the whole meeting, so we can answer these hard questions, and then make sure that we take care of the people of St. Louis County that serve the residents of St. Louis County. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And thank you. And Councilwoman Clancy, I'm told that it is one PM Tuesday, March second, which was sent to your office.
Thank you. I, we don't have a record of that, but I appreciate the information.
Thank you. Where were we? Um, I think we are on Bill Number Fifty-Two, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we are. Bill Number Fifty-Two, introduced by Councilmember Webb.
Madam Chair, I would like, uh, I would like to hold this, this bill.
Bill Number Fifty-Two is held. I think we have two remaining, Madam Clerk.
Yes, ma'am, we do.
Resolution Number Two, introduced by Councilmembers Days, Fitch, and Webb.
Please read, um, please read the resolution.
Yes, ma'am. Resolution, whereas Hazel Irby graduated from Vashawn High School and went on to attend Lincoln University and Harris Stowe State University, and whereas, after graduation from high school, Hazel married her number-one political supporter, Louis Irby Senior, and they recently celebrated their fifty-fifth wedding anniversary. And whereas, Hazel's entire professional career has been devoted to service to others in positions that included Executive Director for the Community Partnership for the Prevention of Drug and Substance Abuse, Site Director for the Caring Communities Program at Barbara C. Jordan School in University City, and Founder of TAP City Program in University City, which paired teens with seniors who needed assistance with errands and chores. And whereas, Hazel initially became engaged in community service due to a desire to improve the schools her children attended, and she eventually served as President of Parent-Teacher Organizations of several University City schools. And whereas, Hazel was elected to her first political office Committee Woman for the University Township in August of two thousand. And whereas, Hazel emerged as a trailblazer in politics as the first African-American woman to gain a seat on the St. Louis County Council in two thousand and four, winning with sixty-six percent of the vote, and winning reelection multiple times thereafter with ninety-nine percent of the vote. And whereas, as a council member, Hazel sponsored and passed legislation to build a recreation center in North County to provide the young people outlets to grow and groom their talents, founded Project Homeless Connect to couple home insecure individuals with resources and shelter in two thousand and seventeen, worked tirelessly to advocate on behalf of St. Louis Countians affected by the residential mortgage crisis that began in two thousand and seven, and championed one billion dollars in emergency funding for relief services in the Ferguson area. And whereas, Hazel served the people of St. Louis County as first district council member for fifteen years, representing a district with thirty-eight municipalities and approximately one hundred and forty-five thousand constituents. And whereas, history was made when Hazel was elected the first African-American Chair of the Council in two thousand and nine. And whereas, Hazel most recently served as Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion for St. Louis County. And whereas, Hazel has also found time to further serve her community in other leadership positions, including as a member of the National Council of Negro Women, a board member of the Asthma and Allergy Foundation of America, Vice President of the Creve Court Democratic Township, and founding member of the Fannie Lou Hamer Democratic Coalition, for which she has served as Chairwoman since two thousand and fourteen. And whereas, Hazel was the recipient of the Buzz Westfall Award from the St. Louis Democratic Central Committee in two thousand and nineteen, the St. Louis City NAACP Medgar Wiley Evers Medal of Freedom in two thousand and eighteen, the Dr. Dorothy I. Height Leadership Award from the National Council of Negro Women, the District's Uniquely You City Award, and the University City Martin Luther King Spirit Award in two thousand and twenty. And whereas, throughout her life, Hazel has recognized that adversity is typically due to injustice, inequity, and systemic denial of opportunity, and has used her voice to address those root problems. And whereas, Hazel's first priority has always been her husband, her children, Louis Irby Junior, Angela Irby, and Christina Irby Carr, her host of grandkids, and the dozens of people in the community for whom she served as a surrogate mother because her loving spirit would not allow her to do otherwise. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section One, the County Council expresses its most sincere admiration, appreciation, and affection for Hazel Irby. Section Two, the Administrative Director shall send a certified copy of this resolution to Ms. Irby as a permanent token of the Council's esteem.
Thank you very much. I move the adoption of Resolution Number Two. Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
Please call the roll.
Discussion?
Discussion, certainly. Councilwoman Tracus, you're recognized.
Thank you. Um, I have, um, some difficulty understanding the rationale behind the resolution, uh, and, and the reason is, we passed a similar resolution, perhaps even more expansive, in two thousand and nineteen, when Councilwoman Irby first left the council. So, at, at a minimum, this resolution is duplicative of that, and I don't understand why we're doing it again. Just as importantly, this body and every member on it has a fiduciary duty to the county. As is well-known, uh, former Councilwoman Irby has now sued the county, as in, as ends in litigation against the county. With that in mind, I think we need to be mindful of potential unintended consequences of this resolution with respect to that litigation, and I, I think it would be, um, a abandonment of fiduciary duty to move forward with this at this time, perhaps after the litigation is concluded, um, if there was an interest in doing it, that might be a more appropriate time. But for those reasons, I have to abstain from this vote tonight, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Webb?
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry, I got to get faster with this mute, mute button, but thank you for recognizing me. Um, understanding and, uh, respecting Council, Councilman Tracus's statements, I just want to say, as a new elected official, uh- serving in this capacity as a black female leader, I am grateful to have this opportunity to vote yes on this resolution, to recognize the trailblazing that Ms. Hazel Irby served for not only her community, but for women like me. You know, it's hard for people to do something unless they see it. And I see it every day in the life that she lived to, to fight for the people in her community and fight to make the St. Louis County region as a whole better. So I wasn't here in 2019, but I'm glad I'm here now. And I'm here mostly because of women like Ms. Hazel, Mrs. Hazel Irby. So thank you for this opportunity for allowing me to give her her flowers while she is here and give her her due. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis.
Abstained.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Resolution number two, there are six ayes and one abstention.
Resolution number two has been adopted.
Resolution number, excuse me. Go ahead, Kevin.
Resolution number three, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch, Days, Dunaway, Webb, Clancy, Trachis, and Harder.
Please, please read the resolution.
Yes, sir. Resolution, whereas each February, we observe Black History Month as an opportunity to celebrate the countless contributions of black Americans who have changed the course of our country while facing significant barriers throughout history. And whereas Cynthia Golden joined the St. Louis County Police Department, the department, on October 30th, 1972, and was the first African-American female officer in the history of the department. And whereas Cynthia began her career as a recruit at the Greater St. Louis Police Academy, and during her career rose through the ranks and distinguished herself in an impressive variety of assignments, including patrol officer for the Second District, precinct representative to the chief's office, detective assigned to the anti-fence unit, planning and research associate, field training officer, background investigator slash recruiter, instructor at the Greater St. Louis Police Academy, sergeant in the West County Precinct, sergeant in the Afton Precinct, where she directly supervised new officer Tim Fitch, lieutenant in the North County Precinct, security services commander, reserve police commander, and dare unit commander. And whereas Cynthia was the first African-American female officer assigned to solo patrol, the first female officer given the responsibility to field train, to field train new police officers, and one of the first African-American female graduates of the FBI National Academy in Quantico, Virginia, where she served as the 144th Session Section Representative. And whereas during her career Cynthia received dozens of letters of commendation and frequent expressions of appreciation from members of the community and ultimately attained the rank of Lieutenant. And whereas Lieutenant Cynthia Golden retired from the department on Monday, March 31st, 2003. And whereas it is appropriate for the council and all St. Louis Countyans to pause to express appreciation for a woman who is not only a trailblazer in the field of law enforcement, but also demonstrated an unwavering commitment to excellence and devotion to duty for over thirty years. Now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section one, the County Council expresses its most sincere admiration and appreciation to retired St. Louis County Police Lieutenant Cynthia Golden and wishes her many more happy years in retirement spent with family and friends, especially her husband Walter "Coach" Smallwood and her daughter Amber. Section two, the Administrative Director shall send a certified copy of this resolution to Lieutenant Cynthia Golden as a permanent token of the Council's esteem.
Thank you, Kevin. Before I move for the adoption, I'd just like to say, I know Lieutenant Golden and her family are out there listening and watching this evening. I am so glad we got to do this, even though I know Councilwoman Clancy, you asked me why now? She retired in 2003. I think it's pretty obvious that we should have done this back in 2003 and recognized the first African-American female police officer for this county. Absolutely was a trailblazer. As a young police officer, she made a profound impact on me and anybody that worked with her through her career. So I'm sorry Cynthia that we're late with this. However, I'm glad you're here to hear it because it's very deserving. So with that, I move for the adoption of Resolution number three.
Second.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Madam Chair, was that Councilman Harder?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye, and well deserved, Ms. Golden. I appreciated learning so much about your accomplishments and your trailblazing work in the St. Louis County Police Department. And I was tickled as I was reading the resolution because I believe your husband was my high school shop teacher, Mr. Smallwood. So that's small world St. Louis for you, but I hope you and your family are doing well. Aye.
Councilman Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye, and long overdue.
Madam Chair, on Resolution number three, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number three is adopted. And may I add at this, I don't like to interrupt the roll call there, but I, I did like the graphics that you put up, Chris, while they were reading this. And I took note of that it, on the, one of the graphics, it said, "Call/Collect 314," and it gave a number. So I, I kind of laughed at that one, where we've come a long way, what many, many, many years that this woman has, has held up her community. I'm extremely proud to be on this resolution. And thank you, Councilman Fitch, for bringing this forward to us.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we're moving on to unfinished business. Item number one.
Please hold on the order of business.
Item number two. Thank you. Item number two.
Please hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number three, Second District.
Just making sure I'm not on mute. The new liquor license be approved as requested.
Is there a second?
Second. Trachis.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Item number four, Second District.
The new liquor license be approved as requested.
Is there a second?
Second, Trachis.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Guys have it. Motion carries.
Item number five, Second District.
The new liquor license be approved as requested.
Is there a second?
Second, Trachis.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Motion carries.
Item number six, Second District.
The new liquor license be approved as requested. It sounds like Starbucks is going to be a lot more fun.
With your legislation.
Second, Trachis.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
No. And Councilwoman Clancy, I don't usually do Starbucks, but I might do Starbucks now.
Especially when they have a beer latte.
Moving right along.
Moving on to new business this evening, we have three prepared orders. The first order is in the matter of communication from Todd A. Martin, Director of Administration, and Jennifer Keating, Apping Director of Procurement, requesting authorization to dispose of certain personal property.
I move for adoption of order number one.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Order number one is adopted.
Order number two is in the matter of the requests of the records manager for permission to destroy certain books, papers, and records of various county offices and departments.
I move for adoption of order number two.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Order number two is adopted.
And prepared order, order number three is in the matter of
Deer hunt.
Authorization for an archery hunt in Queenie Park during 2021. I believe that is the, the order.
You are correct. I don't have, seem to have it with me.
That's okay. Do we have a motion to that effect?
I move for adoption of order number three.
Is there a second?
Second, Fitch.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. No. Please make sure that my no is recorded, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Order number three is adopted. Any other matters to come before the council at this particular point?
Yes, Councilwoman Days.
Councilwoman Clancy, you're recognized.
I want to recognize the grim milestone that our country surpassed this week with 500,000 deaths to coronavirus in St. Louis County. We are at 1,932 deaths and I ask that all of us keep those who are grieving in our thoughts and prayers.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Harder, you're recognized.
Thank you. Just want to thank the council for your support of the Bill thirty-eight on the Power Plex. I hope that this time next year, we, we will be there to throw out the first ball at these events and, and we'll move forward from there. So I thank you all for your support. Secondly, Councilman Dunaway, if you do have your committee of the whole about the Prairie project that someone from either the partnership or from the county ninth floor or both are there to tell us about the due diligence and the repair work that was supposed to be done to that site from the folks that were building the ICE Plex and that all things have been satisfied in what they were supposed to do prior in the last couple of years to this project coming forward. So that would be helpful if that information was shared at that committee of the whole.
Councilman Harder, would it be all right if I invited somebody?
Councilwoman Dunaway?
Oh, sorry. Would it be all right if I invited somebody from the Missouri Department of Natural Resources as they're the ones that released the ICE people from their obligation?
That would be fine. Whoever had the authority in this situation would be fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you. And Councilman Dunaway, my office will get you some questions that we have had previously and we'll get that list to you as soon as we can, all right? Okay, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Webb.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Councilwoman Dunaway, also, while you're inviting your guests, it may be value added to also invite representation from the the non-for-profit that's associated with this. So I would ask that you consider inviting them as well. Madam Chair, I also have one more piece to share. So I do want to make an announcement for District Four and all who else who are interested. There will be, I will be hosting a town hall meeting specifically for Jamestown Mall on Thursday, March 4th at 6:00 PM. It will be a virtual town hall meeting. It will be online registration and same-day registration. So you can find it on the District Four County webpage, and then we'll also be putting out information on our Facebook page and reaching out to all other Centers of Influence in North County to spread the word. This has been on every forefront of everyone's mind forever and a day. And so it's been over a year since the community has had feedback on where the Port Authority is in this development. And so we will be, as our panelists of guests, we will have with us leadership from the Port Authority. President Moplin will be there and also Ms. Ja- Jackie Wellington will be there and inviting all of the Port Authority board members to attend. So it will give an opportunity for the committee, I'm sorry, the board and the community to come together and share what they've done to this point and what are their next steps. So more information to come, but thank you for this opportunity to share our town hall meeting on Thursday, March 4th, 6:00 PM, virtual meeting. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And thank you. Thank you. Anyone else with any further announcements?
Yes, one final comment.
You are.
Yes. Please, I would ask everyone to join me in recognizing Diane Valenti, who is celebrating a birthday today. So happy birthday, Diane.
Happy birthday, Diane.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Clancy, for that, that was on my list to, to say as well. We do appreciate you, Diane. Thank you so much, and we have many, many more.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Anyone else? The last thing I want to say is that we will be entertaining the rules. The rules will be going out probably tomorrow or the day after tomorrow. We've had them hanging out there for a little while for everyone to have an opportunity to weigh in on those, but it is my intention to move those on Tuesday. With anything else to come before the council?
Councilwoman Days, I have a follow-up question related to that.
Sure.
Were you able to get a legal analysis on those proposed changes yet? I know that that had come up before in your office, was wondering, you know, what the council's thoughts were before sharing it with
Yes, we did.
County Council's office.
Yes, we did. So thank you for that.
Can you share the legal analysis, please?
When, when we, we'll be talking about that and we might send out a memo. I think we're planning to send out a memo to that respect. Just based on the, just based on the changes and concerns that they had, but not on the, on the rules as a whole. The changes that you made, we will be doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else further?
Motion to it. So moved.
Second.
Second, Fitch.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Y'all have a good evening. Enjoy the warm weather.